Rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven? Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And give us not the temptation, but deliver us from evil. The line is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D on the agenda is swearing in Fire Captain Alex Root. Alex, come on up.
Alex, we're gonna swear you in as Fire Captain, which means you got promoted. And you get promoted because you show potential, right? You get awards when you do something good. You get promoted because you show potential, right? So you're gonna have a crew of people that are relying on you. The only thing they wanna do is they wanna go home and die. That's what they wanna do. It's up to you to make sure they can do that. So you gotta train them really, really hard, right? You can't be their friend. You have to be not their boss, not their manager, their leader. The nice thing is, is you got people back there already. They're a little higher ranking than you are. And they've done it. They've done a really good job. So be advised, that's the first two people I'm talking to right back there, okay? There's a bunch of people out on this table, almost you out there, doing lots of stuff every day. They don't go to the last call 'cause somebody on your team did something stupid. So train them not to do stupid things. Pretty good? Right, easy, alright? Okay. Any questions? You need your amp yet to me? Alex Root?
Alex Root.
You're swearing this way or?
I'm just swearing this way.
To support the Constitution of the United States?
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter ordinances and resolutions?
The charter ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio?
The city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio?
The laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge and perform?
Faithfully discharge and perform.
All duties that come upon me?
All duties that come upon me.
As captain of the city of Napoleon?
As the captain of the city of Napoleon.
Fire department?
Fire department.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
And understand me?
And understand me.
Pledge allegiance, Captain. Sign right there for me. And I'm gonna sign. We have this, we have this, a really big thing here, right back here though. Come on in, Mom. Are we good back there? We good? We good, we good? Come on up, come on up. Yep, 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 yep. Yep. Anybody else showing up here, Alex? Cap? Dad, they want you to come up. They're gonna embarrass you. It's a big day. Who's there?
That's me, sir.
You wanna hurt your beard too? Do you have a family picture?
No, we're good.
You good? Can you tell us about yourself, there young man?
Yeah, I was raised in Pennsyl, Ohio. Joined the fire service 2016. Hired part-time here in 2017. And then I was hired full-time November of last year.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E. Approval of minutes from December 4th, 2023 council meeting. In absent submit any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item F. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to address council on something that is not on the agenda, you can step up to the podium now. And when you get up there, if you could give us your full name and your address. And then, we do have a five-minute time limit.
It won't take any.
Just let you know.
My name is Steve Gurkin. My address is N372114. I live outside of the city, but here for Custom Agro Systems, which is inside-city limits. So, I wrote this down so I wouldn't forget what to say. So, I'm just gonna read it.
Alright.
We are requesting that council reconsider the output limit on solar production to include a commercial level that is above the current 25 KW system limit. The 25 KW limit may work well for residential projects, but it fails to make a meaningful impact on commercial facilities. The available grants the federal government has instituted to encourage commercial solar generation are very beneficial to businesses like ours. We'd appreciate, we do appreciate the quality and reliability that we have with our current power system. Do not wanna do anything that would upset that. At the same time, we'd like to take advantage of the current government incentives that could help our business and other businesses like ours grow. The second request we have is for the city to allow us to limit the solar system to 25 KW output while still installing a larger system for our own use. This option would allow us to make full usage of a larger system while limiting the amount that can be fed back onto the grid to the current 25 KW limit. We believe this would eliminate large fluctuations on the grid that the electric department may be concerned with while still providing a benefit to our business. This scenario will not provide us with as much savings as the first option, but the compromise may benefit both the city and custom agro systems. The current incentives, just to let you guys know what the incentives that are out there that we're interested in. There are 50% REAP grants out there, 30% federal tax credits, and 10% low-income community bonuses. So you put all those together, plus depreciation. There's incredible amounts of government money right now that can be used, that would benefit us greatly. The system sizes that we're looking at, we have two meters on our property. So we were looking at a 165 KW on one meter and a 255 on the other. Both those combined would be about 75% of our total usage. These incentives give this project the potential to be very beneficial to our business both now and at our current operating capacity and in the future as we grow. We'd like council to reconsider this issue and continue to partner us in growing our business and others like ours in this community. Custom Agro Systems would like to continue to invest in this community rather than shifting that investment to our other locations. Thank you for your consideration. That's it.
Thank you very much. Andy, did you want to elaborate on this at all? Or the other thing we can do is also send this to the electric committee to get a little bit deeper dive into it?
Yeah, we can certainly give it another look. As I presented at the last electric committee and BOPA meeting, I looked at approximately 30 AMP communities and what they're, what they allow. Those ranged anywhere from 5 kilowatts to one was over 10 megs, which is huge. But by and large, they averaged anywhere from 100 to 200 to 500 kilowatts allowance for non-residential customers, your commercial and industrial customers. They also limited the amount per feeder or per circuit in many cases. And some of them also limited the total, the aggregate amount of kilowatts or megs that can go onto their system. And a pretty standard number was 1% of the load. Could be, it could be no more than 1% for solar. I certainly am willing to work at trying to gather more information. I mentioned it at the AMP board meetings last week. I spoke with Jolene Thompson, the CEO, and asked her for some direction. And she stated that Bowling Green has gone through a similar study and challenge most recently and that they would be a good one to speak with. So I am familiar with some of the players over there. And I would be more than happy to investigate it further. So I don't think it's a bad idea to throw it back to the electric subcommittee for further review. And another thing I'll say about Custom Ag. I mean, they're a homegrown company.
Yeah.
Born and raised in Napoleon. And they've sprouted out to, what, nine different locations now? Is that right?
Ten.
Ten. So I, you know, I wanna be able to help them. But at the same time, I also understand the limits. There are limits on our system. But I think it's worthy of further review.
And could we, could we have a representative from AMP join us at one of our, at the next electric meeting?
I can see what I can do in that regard.
Even if they join via WebEx. Just have an expert.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Steve, do you have a timeframe on when you need an answer by? If we were to refer this to committee, I wanna be sure that's what they hear.
Not necessarily. The grant rounds are every three months right now. So, I mean, it's always the sooner the better. But it's, they'll continue at least through '24, it looks like.
Okay.
Dave?
The amount of energy you're, you're still, did I understand it correctly that the amount of energy that you would feed back into the system would still be the amount that we're allowing right now? You just wanna use it for internal use?
For options.
With this, with the second option, we can limit the output of the system. So your current limit of 25 KW, if we went with that, we could actually program the system so it could never put more than 25 KW at a time back onto the grid.
Okay.
And in which case, it would, we would just make a decision on if we were overproducing at a certain time to either dump it or get a better system installed.
So it's for internal use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not trying to become a generator of power.
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments this time? Yes, Andy, after you check with Bowling Green, then if you didn't, let us know which month the electric committee meeting that you want to bring this back up. I'd hate to schedule it for in January if you didn't have the time between now and then?
Right.
To check with them. But I'm not saying let's put it off either. So either January or February would be great.
Yeah. I don't believe I can have anything ready for January, the January meeting. But I'm confident that by February, the February meeting, I'll be able to have some further information.
Okay. How's that sound to you guys? Great, alright. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item G. Reports from council committees. G1, the electric committee did not meet on December 11th, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. G2, the water sewer refuse recycling and litter committee did not meet on November 13th, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. G3, municipal property building land use and economic development did not meet on December 11th, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. And item G4, the Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet on December 18th, 2023 due to lack of agenda items. Item I, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. I1 is resolution number 057-23. A resolution imposing an immediate moratorium on the issuance and processing of permits allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of adult-use marijuana within the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Motion. Who wants that? Andy or Billy?
Thank you, Council President, I'll speak to that. So, as everybody's aware, issue two passed and the rules changed some of the rules on December 7th, allowing for adult-use cannabis. In this situation, the final rules are not clear, of course. The state legislature has not passed anything and certainly has not sent anything to the governor. So I think it would be wise to hit the pause button, put this moratorium on, and wait to see kinda how the rules shake out before a decision is made. This would ensure that nothing would take place in the interim, that council wouldn't want, would want to see it happen. It's, it does have an expiration date. It was in, was it July, I think late July? Something like that certainly would expire prior to that if council were to pass an ordinance making more permanent rules. Or whenever council wanted to, that would be just fine. It's just a moratorium, it's a pause. It's the pause button at this point, just to see what's gonna actually happen and to protect the city in the meantime.
Thank you, Billy. I think I shared with council in one of my weekly updates that I sat in on an Ohio municipal league meeting, I believe it was last week. And they shared the information from both, both the House bill and the Senate bill. And there's so much, because they're still looking at changing this law. There's so much varying information now between those two bills that I'm not sure how it's gonna end up. Hopefully, as Billy said, in six months, they'll have most of it sorted and will be able to make a better decision.
And a moratorium could certainly be extended if needed as well. We did that last time with medical marijuana waiting on those rules 'cause those rules took a good long while to be put into place as well. And so, in my opinion, this protects the city in the interim while we wait.
I agree.
I had an OMAA meeting last week and this was a discussion during one of the afterparts of that meeting and several other OMAA committees had issued a moratorium just with the uncertainty. It sounded like things even took a turn early last week with the lawmakers' discussions. So I think this is a good move.
Does it automatically renew? Or does it automatically goes away on or about July 31st?
July 31st, it expires if council takes no other action. Certainly, we'll be watching to make sure what's going on. And we'll not let it expire with nothing else happening.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to second read. Item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. Item J1 is ordinance number 054-23. An ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the city of Napoleon, Ohio. City manager and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I don't think there's anything, any changes or anything. Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
I'll make a motion for suspension.
Okay, the motion for suspension, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Elaborate at all why you're?
I know historically, we've done this and just postdated it to the first of the year. I don't foresee us having any issues passing this on a third read. If we could do this while we still have the councils of last year intact, I think that's a good move. Also, we would have to, or we could avoid the potential postdating that, so.
It's this council's business. Just, let's just let this council get done.
Alright, any other questions or comments on suspension? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alright, Marissa, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
That has passed under suspension on second read. Okay, item J2, ordinance number 055-23. An ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the city of Napoleon, Ohio finance director and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this one?
If not, I'll also make a motion for suspension.
A second.
Alright, any other questions, comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alright. Please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on second read under suspension. Item J3, ordinance number 056-23. An ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the city of Napoleon, Ohio law director and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
A second.
Alright, same as the last two. Any comments, questions?
Second.
Alright, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Any questions or comments before we call the roll on the ordinance? Okay, hearing done, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Alright, that has passed on second read under suspension. Before I move forward, it just dawned on me that Ross potentially could be running the meeting next time. Were you trying to get rid of some? Wondering about that, Ross.
Smart man.
No comment.
Alright, I should have you read the third reads. Alright, moving on to third reads of ordinances and resolutions. We have K1, resolution number 041-23. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds and authorizing a department director to take bids on certain projects, services, equipment, materials, supplies while their requirement, while the requirement for additional legislation to do so in the year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Alright, Kevin?
This is the third read of all these, obviously. And this will get us to our budget. I can explain each one of these again, otherwise there's no changes from the previous two readings on this.
I mean, if I have to read them all, you should have to explain them.
Be more than happy to.
I'm sure you would. Any other questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly? Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item K2, resolution number 042-23. A resolution authorizing expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 in and for the year 2024 as it relates to reoccurring costs associated with the operation of the city for payment of expenses and for purchases associated with vendors utilized by multiple departments within the city, elimination of necessity of competitive vetting, competitive bidding, in and for the year 2024 as it relates to certain transactions and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Kevin?
No changes in these exhibits. These exhibits allow us to spend over $50,000 as budgeted in certain, certain list of the businesses and the organizations in these exhibits.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Item K3 is ordinance number 045-23. An ordinance establishing the appropriation measure budget of the city of Napoleon, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
I would say of all the ordinances that you're gonna pass tonight, this is one of the most important because this establishes our 2024 budget. By you guys passing this, this, in essence, keeps the city of Napoleon open starting January 1.
It's a good thing. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item K4, resolution number 046-23. A resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances from respective funds to other funds per Section 5705.14 ORC on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2024, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
This allows us to do fund-to-fund transfers. For example, the example I've used in our first two reads is that all the income tax goes into the 170 fund and then we disperse that out to the funds that are set by other ordinances and resolutions. No changes in this one.
Alright, any questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
It has passed on third read. Item K five, ordinance number zero four seven dash two three, an ordinance amending the allocation of funds as found in sections one nine three point one one and one nine four point zero one three of the codified ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion. Second.
All right, Kevin?
This is the breakout of the city income tax between the general fund and the, what we call the 400 fund, our capital fund. It's sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent, which is the same as it has been the last two years, or maybe further, at least the last two years.
All right, any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that has passed on third read. Item K six, ordinance number zero four eight dash two three, an ordinance apportioning the expenses incurred, including wages, salaries, and fringe benefits of the mayor, council, and various other departments of the City of Napoleon, which are not otherwise directly charged to a special and/or capital projects among various accounts effective January first, 2024, amending ordinance numbers one zero four dash zero nine, zero eight seven dash one nine, zero six nine dash two zero, zero five nine dash two one, and zero seven six dash two two, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Kevin?
The reimbursable cost, this is an example of what we, where individuals are paid out of the general fund, and then the general fund gets reimbursed back. The best example I could say right now is human resources. Not only does she, she do human resources for those that get paid in the general fund, but also from the water plant, from the wastewater plant and, and the electric department. So we, her, part of her salary gets reimbursed back to the general fund as well as others.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Moving on to item K seven, ordinance number zero four nine dash two three, an ordinance establishing a new position classification pay plan for the employees of the City of Napoleon, Ohio for the year 2024, repealing ordinance number zero seven seven dash two two and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Kevin?
These are the base hourly rate pay scales for different levels, A, B, C, and D, or top to bottoms, depending on the type of position that it is, and these are no changes from the last second read.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that one has passed on third read. Item K eight, resolution number zero five zero dash two three, a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County, Ohio, in and for the year 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Kevin?
This resolution states the City of Napoleon is going to authorize forty-five thousand dollars to our CIC. Well worth it, and we get billed quarterly on this. So with this approval, and this is the same amount that was approved last year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that has been passed on third read. Item K nine, ordinance number zero five two dash two three, an ordinance amending the City Income Tax Code, Chapter one ninety-four of the codified ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
A motion.
Second.
Hey, Kevin?
This is the third read of the follow-up to the changes that were required in our income tax code due to the passing of Substitute House Bill thirty-three in the last General Assembly. So no changes on this. Just a matter of backing up, the last resolution that you passed has officially ended the 2024 budget, our challenge that we had. So the project, I'll call it. So congratulations to that.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
All right, that has passed on third read. Item K ten, resolution number zero five three dash two three, a resolution authorizing the execution of the 2023 NPP Power Pool participant scheduled with American Municipal Power Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Andy?
Yes, Council President, third and final reading of this. We are one of forty-three different AMP municipalities that are in the Northern Power Pool, which is the first energy footprint across the top of Ohio. And this agreement has not been updated since 2011, and it's just the approval of that new agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that has been passed on third read. Feel like we should go back to the first read and pass that one. Clear the plate. All right, move on to item L, Good of the City. L one, discussion or action, review approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for December 2023 as PSCAF three at monthly average factor of zero point zero one six six eight and JV two, zero point zero six five one two nine. Andy?
Yes, Council President, when you look at it, this month's figure relative to the last three or four months, it seems like it's up quite a bit. It's still lower than comparable, comparable months in previous years across all the rate classes, and it's just basically a seasonal increase. So it's nothing significant.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, we need a motion to approve.
A motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that has been approved. Item L two is discussion or action, appointment of two council members to the Volunteer Firefighters Department Fund Board. Well, this, right now, I believe I am on there and. You can.
You guys are doing a fantastic job.
Well, it says council member, and I'm not going to be a council member anymore, so. I think you'll be able to fill my spot just fine. Thank you for volunteering. That's great.
It's, it's one meeting a year, is that correct?
Yes.
And the meeting lasts all of?
Two and a half minutes, I think.
Yeah, if you're a five-minute here for a long time.
Yeah.
If, if I was in the position, I'd volunteer, but I can't do it, so.
And Ken, do you want to do it again?
Sure.
That's great. Anyone else would like to volunteer?
I'll do it if Bobby and Dr. Dave are not interested. I didn't want to take it away from you. Bobby, you agree with that?
All right, can we have a, a motion for Ross and Ken?
A motion.
Second.
All going, go, go, take it, take it, take it.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave? Yes.
Ken? Yes.
All right, that has passed. Item L three, discussion or action, appoint of two council members to the Volunteer Peace Officers Department Fund Board. And they meet at the same time and once a year?
Yeah, right after, right before.
Do we want to keep the same people that we just recommended for first?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion for that?
A motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Thank you, both of you. Item L four, discussion or action, approval for HR to apply for a safety intervention grant on behalf of the fire department.
HR, would you like to handle this?
Sure. Long story short, Sedwick, who's our management company that helps me with all of our PDCs, brought to my attention that on our behalf, they can apply for our safety intervention grant that the fire department can utilize a list of different ways that they could use this money. So I spoke with Chief Bowen, and they were already looking for grants for specific things built into their budget. So we're just looking for approval to allow Sedwick to apply for the grant on our behalf for the fire department.
Do you know how much this grant is for?
It's a ten percent match up to forty thousand dollars.
Awesome. And are there specific things that has to be used for?
Yes, so they usually utilize it for extra patient equipment.
Thank you.
And that is in the 2024 budget for that ten percent match already, so it wouldn't be an issue as far as the match on that. So you have to pay more money.
Even better. Okay, any other questions or comments on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Item L five, discussion or action to approve the fire department to apply for the AFG grant in 2024 for the potential purchase of a fire engine.
Yes, Council President, I will allow Chief Bowen to speak to this.
So we spoke at council time, or at budget time with council about the potential purchase of a new fire engine. The spec wasn't done, that's why it was not in the budget for 2024. The spec for it is getting closer, and the price of fire engines continue to go up. So the AFG grant is through FEMA. It's the Assistance for Firefighters Grant, and they're allowing up to a million dollars. And the price we're looking at for a fire engine is going to be in the one point two to one point five range. It is a five percent match, but we also have money in the two forty-two account, which is the fire equipment fund, that would cover that five percent match along with any additional costs. So in there, the engine we are specking is at the top of the line because it is for, not today's fire department, but to last us fifteen, twenty years down the road as our previous equipment has. So it does have a lot of amenities to it that could potentially be cut off if we get into a financial straight with it, but we don't look for that to happen. So there won't be any special need to pass anything. The money's already sitting there, and we just want your approval to apply for that because there's not many grants out there that are of that size for departments like ours.
Thank you. Do you know when this will be granted?
We'll apply for it in January. It doesn't go to awarding till around the third quarter. And with that being said, that two forty-two account gets money put into it every year, and the money that would be due for the engine wouldn't be due till delivery, which right now we're looking at the three to four-year range. So there is a lot of, but once we get locked in on an apparatus, that price stays no matter what. There's no leniency on that. That is the price we pay. So on the flip side of that, when things start to come back down, we're going to pay potentially more than what we could get one for then, but who knows what that's going to do. But right now, we set pretty good with it.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I think, I think this is a great opportunity. Kevin and I had lunch with Senator Vance's representative, local representative, and he encouraged us to, to go for this as well. I think it's a great opportunity, great timing. He said, we talked about it during budget, and it's been on our radar, so I'm all for it.
What's the current age of our fire engine?
The engine we're looking to replace is pushing twenty-five years old. By the time we get it, it'll be almost thirty years old. So that'd be engine eight oh five, which is having mechanical issues, and it's nickel and diming. So right now, we're waiting on quote for some repairs to get made to it. And that was a spec engine, or a, I'm sorry, a demo engine when we purchased it. So it was one that traveled around for people to look at, and we bought it at that time. So this one here will be custom-built by a group of people we put together that are looking into the future of the needs of the fire department down the road as well and citizens.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that's been approved. Item L six, discussion or action, PC two three dash zero five subdivision of replat of six ninety East Riverview Avenue.
Six ninety East Riverview Avenue is basically the old junkyard that, that sits basically across from Azul. And as you drive along East Riverview, you open the gate up, and there's a house that kind of sits right there in the middle of it. So the replat is basically, that's right now a commercial area. The replat is to make that a residential house. Obviously, it'll take special permits if they want to put it back into commercial, but the idea is to have that house be, be actually a residence again, basically in that, that commercial area and that pass through Planning Commission with unanimous vote.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Why was that not rezoned or changed when it was built?
I think it's been commercial for a long time. I don't know if they, I don't know why that, that's a good question, Ken. I don't have an answer.
Was that used as part of their?
I thought it was probably just part of the business, I think, yeah.
When the old, when the old house got too full to jump, they built that one.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Hey, that has been awarded. Item L eight, discussion or action to present the mayor and two.
Was seven first?
Did I skip seven?
You did.
Sorry about that.
You're fine.
L seven, discussion or action, award of bid for the Oakwood Avenue project.
As Council President, per the memo, this rebuilds Oakwood Avenue from Perry Street downtown, all the way out across the twenty-four to Freedom Drive. It's new, new surface, some new infrastructure, curbs, gutters, driveway approaches. The low bid, bids were open last Wednesday, the low bid was Vernon Nagel at four million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. The engineer's estimate for the project was four million nine hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. With this project, we are, we have received a two million dollar ODOT small city grant to cover some of the costs, and we are also working with Congressman Latta's office on a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar stag grant that is currently in the appropriations bill, which is kind of tied up in Congress, but it is included in the bill, which is the good news. If that makes it through, then we'll have another seven hundred and fifty thousand to throw at this project. So I ask for council's approval to accept[1494.05] So I ask for council's approval to accept this bid and move forward with the project.
If you have any questions or comments? Need a motion to award?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Can I give out the presents now? Molly's excited to give out the presents, so. Item L8, Discussion or Action, to present the mayor and two council members gifts for their services. For you, would you like some help?
It's all you. Alright, Molly, we hate to see you go. It's been great working with you. Appreciate your service to the city. I know I've learned a lot even working with you and the, that's even the passion that you have for committees that you were on. Made it easy for us to, to work together and to move forward. Thank you very much. And with this award, congratulations. I hope they have your speech ready.
Thank you, Ken. I need to grab my notes. It won't be long, I promise. I just wanted to thank everyone. It takes a lot of time to serve on council and all the committees and all the other commitments. But you all made me feel welcome and it was really an honor to be with everyone. Even from like the first couple months when I went out to every single department head, you guys made me feel welcome, you answered my questions. It was all great to meet you and meet the personnel you work with. That was really something special I think the city has. It's kinda fun to get to learn the inner workings of the city, so. There's been a lot of change throughout my time on council. I started with COVID. So my swearing-in had Joe and the mayor here, and then the city manager, and it was me. So it was really interesting. Then we've had some personnel transitions, but it was always easy. Every, every transition was easy. I never felt like we were on fire or anything like that. I think that the city runs really smooth and I think that speaks to the leaders within the city and all the council members. You guys always listen to everyone respectfully, and I think that's really special because a lot of people can gain opinions and I think that's really neat. So it's just really neat to be part of something bigger, something larger. Taking the time, volunteering your time. It, it's fun to see that you can help make a difference. I've enjoyed serving on committees and boards like the CIC. And you can meet other new leaders within the community and that's really, that's, that's cool. And I hope to, to gain from that and be able to serve on some more committees or boards. Hopefully, this will be another opening. I also have faith in the new individuals coming on. I think you guys will do great. And I just want you guys to know that I will forever be grateful for my experience here on council, so thank you.
Molly, just so you know, you can come back at a later time.
Yes, yes, maybe when they grow up.
Alright, Dan. So Dan, I've enjoyed my time working with you. I think you started a couple of months-
Two weeks ahead of you.
Two weeks ahead of you. So it was nice that I had somebody else to learn with, even though I've worked together from the beginning. And then as council president, you were council pro tem for a good portion of that time. I really appreciated having a partner like you. And just your passion for the community, not just the city, but what you do for the schools, the county, and our whole community, it's, it's great to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Unlike Mrs. Nepley, I'm a little older and I'm not real good with technology, so I don't have any son on the phone. But just a couple of comments. One, I just wanna thank the citizens of Napoleon because eight years ago, when I got elected to this position, it was actually a contested election. There was more people on the ballot than needed, so I'm very grateful for that. And from the time I've had here, and as Molly said, you know, I've enjoyed working with this body. And believe it or not, over the eight years, there has been several changes in personnel on this council, but I think we've worked together very well over that timeframe. And I guess my, my recommendation for future councils is just to continue to work together. We don't all have to vote the same, and it has been many times we did not. But, you know, we have to respect each other, get along with each other. And not just with the members of council, but with these department heads out here, with the county commissioners, as well as with the schools and with the businesses. I think when we continue to work as a team, I think we've seen some good progress over the last several years. And I think we can continue to grow, the city can continue to grow that way. My wife and I have no plans on leaving Napoleon. No, I don't plan on running again in two years, but I, I am very willing to continue to serve Napoleon and the city in any way I can on committees or boards. So again, I wanna thank you and good luck, you two folks, as you join this body up here. And I have, as she said, I have all the confidence in you. Thank you.
I'm not going to skate, if this one's him, I might as well stand up, sir. So one of my favorite qualities about you is your integrity and your dignity speaks volumes of you. From somebody who's been with the city less than two years, and I've heard about you, the community, before I even started here. It's one of the main reasons why I chose to come here. You're very resourceful, you're very efficient, innovative, and that's something that's super hard to find in a mayor. And no offense, Joe, but he has got some big shoes to fill. You have come in here and set and helped shape the city in a, in a way not many mayors can do. You've shaped our future, not only from past leaders that have been in here who speak volumes of you, but all of us currently and those that will step to these doors in the future. You will still be shaping us far into the future. We wanna present you with this award for your service to the city. And thank you for everything that you have done, you continue to do for our city. And we hope to see you back in the future.
I, I'm glad you know the timer thing, 'cause I'm going a little longer than five minutes, so you have to bear with. Earlier this month, we have one of those dry erase calendars on our, on our fridge, right? And earlier this month, Shawna, my wife, is sitting there, she, she was working on it. And I, and I heard her say, "Ooh, oh, okay, wow, that's different." And I go, "Okay, what day of the week do we have three kids do five things in 20 minutes?" She said, "No." She says, "I'm wondering to ask you, since January 1st is a Monday, are you gonna have council on January 2nd?" And obviously, it seemed dawned on her, seemed not dawned on me that we're not putting council on our calendar anymore. 'Cause for the last 11 years, three months, every time she filled that out, every Monday was the first thing she did. Council, 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 council. But I was thinking about that, and I was thinking about this group and people that are gonna be here on January 2nd. That's the only thing that's determined right now, is you will meet at city council on January 2nd. After that, it's wide open. It is completely wide open. What you're gonna do is up to you. And it's up to you to continue to move Napoleon forward. And the nice thing about people on this side is people sitting out there, all your great department heads. They do a wonderful job. You talk about like a Dustin, right? Before Dustin came, we had IT idea. Now we get IT department. A department whose technology has to work now, 'cause you're not gonna tell somebody from Chief Max's team or Chief Owen's team, "Don't worry, just reboot, it'll work eventually." No, no, no. It has to work, has to work now. That's what you do. The highest compliment I can pay to an IT person is, "I barely knew you." 'Cause I'm not calling this is broke. My stuff was never broke. I always appreciate it about you, Dustin, I really, really do. So you're talking to a guy like a Tony Connor. You know, Tony is, Tony and Chad are the only two department heads that have served with me the entire time. Everybody else has rotated through. Tony, when I first got here, there was movement on this side to close the golf course, fill in the pool, cut everything back. And I'm so glad we didn't do that. Wise your heads prevailed, 'cause now we got a world-class pool, we got a golf course that has one of the best years ever in 2023. And oh, by the way, a ballpark that is getting built right now because of things, because of the pool and the golf course is there. Without those things there, they're not building that baseball field. They're just now. But the other reason is, is what his team does every day. They're the team out there cleaning stuff, making it nice, 'cause if it was trash, people aren't voting for a new pool. They aren't. That's what Tony brings to us each and every day. And there's Jeremy, how are ya? So when I first got on council, I called not your predecessor, but his predecessor, and I said, I don't remember his name. Forget, what's that?
Matt.
Matt, thank you very, Matt. Thank you very much. I called Matt, I said, "Matt, Council Miles, I wanna come down and see your operation." Pause, pause, pause. "Oh, yeah, okay, come on down." But nobody, we didn't even down, right? So Tom and Brittany coordinate with Andy and get a good tour. You're gonna learn more in a day or two days, boots on the ground, than you'll, you'll learn up here in a month. Get out there and learn. And he took me through. And then where we stayed with you, Congressman Latta's office called on Tuesday, said, "Hey, we'll be there Thursday," clicked. Uh-oh, whatever he did. So we ended up at your place, and Bob Laddo chided me about it once, he went, "Yeah, he took me to the wastewater." But he took me there and he always, then he always says, "No, I really appreciate that." 'Cause when he was county commissioner, that's what he wanted to see. He wanted to see government dollars getting spent, and I think he did a great job. And he had a really resourceful staff, too. It's kind of incredible, the resourcefulness they have and the ingenuity. He had one of your team members in some kind of big award, right, for some creation or something? Am I thinking that right? Yeah, yeah. And next to you is the other guy in the system, Jeff. Wow, Jeff, you did a hell of a job. Second, second water superintendent. I think you have one of the more highly educated departments probably in Northwest Ohio. And it's a testament to how well you manage them. That's how, they go anywhere they want to, but they wanna work for you, 'cause you treat them right, you treat them right every day. And did we have a boiler alert this year, a small one, 'cause a water line broke? Am I just imagining that?
I don't think we, we didn't have any citywide boiler.
Well, no citywide, right?
No.
Well, it's another testament to you and your team, because the, as you know, the chemistry of that Womby River changes not daily, but hourly. To bring that in and push it through our system and push out fresh water, it's amazing. And we were told, we've got the new system online, you're gonna blow a skid out. In six months, you're gonna blow a skid out. We never did that, because we took care of all our stuff, day in and day out. We always, always appreciated that. Sitting next to you is a guy I think I surprised 11 years, three months ago, 'cause you and Coop came to our house on strong, should read rusty water. And you came and put a filter in, and said, "I'll tell, I'll tell John Beish that you did a good job tonight at city council." And it threw me like, "Uh, what?" Yeah, I'm doing city council, like, "Okay, crap, what did I just do?" But you did a great job. And a great job ever since, too. And when you took over for the legend of Jeff Rathke, well, I, we had a, well, it wasn't really a conversation, it was more of a, hey, do it right. A little different than that, but you do a hell of a job. And everybody complains, one of your guys complains about, "He never did it." Yeah, you did. You're the guy in the hole on a cold day in January digging the water line out. 'Cause water lines never break on 75 and sunny days. It's always seven degrees and blowing, that's when the water line would break. That's what you guys do. You go out there and take care of all that stuff, day in, day out, appreciate it. And I'm, I'm glad that when I weigh that, sure, you're gonna weigh back with all five fingers. I appreciate that, not just the middle one, so. You know, you, you talk, you talk to fire chief right there, the third fire chief I had the honor of serving with, and, and Chief Owen, he has a, there's a tradition of excellence there, and, and he, he, he does that day in, day out. He just did it, and he trains his people hard. They work really, really hard, day in and day out. They're on the front lines. One of the best ways that we get to show how good we are here in the city of Napoleon is when they get called for mutual aid and they go and they do all those things. And 'cause he trains his people hard, they all come back tonight, and that's what he's doing. He does a great job, day in, day out. And here's the thing, if he wasn't doing a good job, he has the intestinal fortitude, is what we'll call it, to come in here and to respect everybody in here and say, "Hey, you guys gotta change this, you gotta change it now before somebody gets hurt." So Chief Owen, I really appreciate all the stuff you do. And then there's Greg. Greg, when I was with Denny Clapp, Denny took him on a tour, and I was like, he was talking up here. I'm like, power comes in, goes, I couldn't, I couldn't do it. I think if I went through Jeff, we said an idea, no, he told me, but Denny had just way up here. What's amazing to me is other communities measure their outages in days or hours. We measure ours in minutes. And people appear voucher me that that's exactly what we do, and I brag about people about it. I was sitting someplace recently and they said, "Yeah, I had to buy a generator for when the power goes out." Not if, when. They kinda, you kinda peeked my ears, said, "We don't have that problem here, because the work you guys do..." Fortunately, when it's sunny and 75, all the work you guys do out there, making sure we have our one hell of a system, so I just appreciated that. Full disclosure, I didn't talk to Chad before this. He's, he's not here today, so I didn't talk to Chad today, so I'm not skipping anybody. Then there's Chief Matt. Chief, I told you, when you took that job, I said, "You're doing two of the hardest things in leadership." You've taken a good organization, you gotta keep it good, and you're leading the peers. Two days before you were chief, they'd call you Dave, and then you'd pin on, and now you're chief. That's hard to do. Ed, it's a challenge you're gonna have, too, pretty soon, right? But you pulled it off brilliantly. You did a hell of a good job. And one of your things was, is different than when Bobby was chief. I think the police force is under scrutiny on a national level. I think one of the things that you did really, really well is show how good positive policing can be and to, to show police such a positive way. SRO is a great example of that, in the school, out of school times, the dog, the other dog. Just the way you guys communicate with, with people, and you do more, the stuff up here, we're never gonna know. And I so always really, really appreciate that. Who did I miss? Did I miss anybody? No? Will you please join me in giving these? I'm not quite done. It's almost Christmas time, so we're gonna have some gifts. And you just got to get over that, you're okay with it.
Jason? I was just thinking the same thing.
Thank you very much. You're absolutely right, because when she joined us, we, she replaced Lady Lambert. Thank you very much. And what we said is, "That's okay, just grab these two rocks and put the cinder block in your backpack and dump it in the deep end." That is exactly what you did. We threw you in. We did. And, and I tell you, you don't only survive that, you thrive. And council, and council, if you wanna see how valuable she is, lose her. Then you realize all the stuff that she does, okay? Amazing stuff. Thank you for everything you do. Really appreciate it. Wonderful job. Thank you very much. Okay, let's have some fun. I had a gift. I'm starting on this one over here. We're gonna leave this first. Molly, if you will. Wrapped it myself. You can find out. Yeah. It's just a soft side cooler.
That's awesome.
I know you and your family are going on the go.
Yes.
And you're gonna, we're gonna have lots of time to serve together more as our kids racing the same age, continue to grow together, so. Just thought I might be able to use that. The other color they offered was like some kind of just really bad brown, like that's not, that's more of a Molly, so.
Thank you.
Come here. I'll just open it up first. And, and I can tell I wrapped these, 'cause, and I'm, honestly, I'm kinda swell. I'm not surprised. My wife was sick this weekend, otherwise these all would've been rewrapped and it would've been really, really nice. Because it's, she's not lying, I'm not lying, so. You need something in your office that says where your office is. So you wanna show people that, so?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Dave, you had, you're the hardest one to stop.
Thank you, sir.
Everybody else had something, had an idea, had an idea, had an idea. And I kept coming back in, couldn't figure out, couldn't figure out, couldn't figure it out, couldn't figure it out. Then I ran across this idea, I'm like, "That's it, this is it to a T."
Thank you, sir.
It's a glass, attached with the map of the city of Napoleon.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your service. Really appreciate it. Really, really appreciate it. We're gonna go Billy next.
Impressive. That's pretty neat.
He's got some Star Wars stuff already in his office. And the nice thing is, I think there's the kind of stars.
Are you sure you need any more of that?
Yeah. The, my mouth's getting dry. The, the focal point of that, that artwork is, is Darth Vader. Not that you're Darth Vader.
Sure.
But he was more of a person of action than of words. And you are the standard for how lawyers can be brief and get their points across. I've talked to lots of others and they always talk for 20 minutes, which two will do. And you talk two minutes, which two minutes will do. I always appreciate that. Thank you for your service. Prior to this and your military stuff, best of luck in, in everything you do.
Thank you for this and thank you for your service as well.
Ken's next. See, this never, right, this never would've been, no. Before you open that up, I gotta, I gotta start with something. We were walking into executive session one time, and you said something. At that point, I'm like, "Oh, that's it," so would you please? There's a top and a bottom to that. It's, it's a mug with the, the two old guys setting the balcony for the puppet shelves, right? Waldorf and Statler, right? Right, I don't, you said something like, "Oh my God, the Statler shit right there." Look, those two guys were never the star of the show. But it wasn't a puppet show without it, okay? In much the same way, Ken. You're not gonna see your name in the papers a lot, right? But it's not council that you're being, I always appreciate serving with you. Thank you for your military service as well. Thank you very, very much. Really, really appreciate it. It's glittery, Ross, I'm sorry. I never understood how glittery it was until I, until I, until I got it, so.
It's very glittery.
It's very glittery, yeah, it really is. Yeah. It's a compass. It's a compass.
Thank you, sir.
The nice thing about compasses, Ross, is they always point them out, okay? So if you ever get a little lost, look at that and go, "Wait a second, what am I doing here?" Okay? It won't tell you what the swamp you gotta cross, the mountain you gotta overcome. It'll always get you back to your azimuth, back to where you were stretched, you're supposed to be going. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
I didn't forget, Marissa.
Thank you.
New moms are notorious for buying stuff- New moms are notorious for buying stuff for their kids. That is not for your kids. That is for you, okay? Thank you for everything you do for us, we really appreciate it, yeah. Andy, this is for you. I tried really hard to find something, my Google skills weren't there. I tried really hard to find a pen made out of a welding rod for you to sign stuff. Andy and I, we took a trip, when he first got city manager, we went to Kestercore. And we get in the floor, and there's a piece of metal thing there. Well, that's really nice weld. Like, I've never heard anybody get cupped in a weld before, so I tried really hard to find a. But you need an ostentatious pen for signing stuff for the city of Napoleon, so there's your, your ostentatious city manager pen.
Thank you, so, appreciate it.
Let Bobby go next. What's that?
I'm so new.
You know, no, 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 no. Bobby, when I first got on council, everyone's moving a foot, not only to close the golf course and the pool, but also to close dispatch. And I sat, where Ken is sitting actually, as a cavalcade of superstars walked through here. And I'll show you exactly what that mug said.
Respect is not given, it is earned.
And you earned it, every day.
Thank you very much.
And you're still showing respect. And I, you had me in dispatch, and you were showing respect then. And you're showing respect here, and people in, in office, they still know, they still respect. And I, I respect a lot of you. And it was earned, it was never given, and you've earned it every day that you've worked the city of Napoleon. So, I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Dan.
At least you didn't try to wrap this one, you just put it in a bag.
Put it in a bag. Easy way to achieve. It's an alarm clock. That I hope never has to get set. So, if you're able to enjoy your retirement.
Not quite there.
I know, I know. But if you look at the clock face, if you turn it around.
Turn it around, okay.
That's the closest font I could find to what a schoolhouse clock would look like. Because you spent so much time in a school. So, that is your reminder of the time you spent there, plus time helping kids head better futures, and all the time you spent here with us too. Helping the city along. We're going to serve together again, I know that for sure, but I wanted to give you that, it's just a, a nice.
Thank you.
It's a box, it says mayor on the outside, it says city of Napoleon on the inside. You're going to find yourself what's getting lots of trinkets, getting a place of stories. So, I thought you might go find that, a, a nice place for that in, in the new office that you have. And best of luck. Now, look. Look, look at all these people. They want you, and they want everybody up here to do the exact same thing, they want you all to succeed. You give them support, they do some amazing things. That's what they've done the last eight years, it's amazing. But I tell you this, I, there's no way, there's no. There's no way I could do this. There's no way I could do this without great support from the family. A lot of nights of eating supper and being gone, and getting home and asking, how were the kids, did they go to bed, how was homework? I'm not going away. Still in the service somehow, I'm sure. So, this isn't goodbye, this is just until next time. Thank you very much, everybody.
I think right now would be a good time to get a picture of all of us before we have all of council here. Jason here. We can do that before we move on.
Yep.
Great.
I don't worry.
Be close to the light until.
Got everybody?
Yeah, yeah, how about Bobby in the water smidgen? Can you do the back of smidgen? Like here, back of it.
Who can?
Like between, yep.
Too many white buttons.
No? Go on, three, one, two, three. One, 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 two, three.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, we will go around the table here. I'll start off tonight and keep it short and sweet, just, I'll thank, thank Jason for everything. Well, I started, apparently I followed in Jason's footsteps. Because I got in council when he was leaving council to become mayor, and now he's leaving mayor office and following you there. So, I don't know what you're doing next. Hopefully, it's, it's as good and more, as rewarding as council has been in working with you. Thank you. That's all I have to say now, we'll go around the room. Let's start with Kevin today.
I just want to thank Jason and Dan and Molly for, you know, trusting me with everything that I do. I wish you all the best of luck. The nice thing about it is, is that I will still see you around town, you're not going anywhere. And I, I would just say you guys have served very well, proudly, and you've always represented the city of Napoleon very well. And I thank you for that. And they, and we have big shoes to fill, starting January, so, best of luck.
Dr. Dave?
I'd like also to thank you very much for your service, Jason, Dan, Molly. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. And it definitely has been enjoyable, discussions we've had, the insight. I, I appreciate the way that you helped move the process along when you were working, and actually helped the city run more efficiently. And that's, that's a goal that I think all the councilmen should have. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, thank you. Go to waste.
Ross?
Thank you guys, really appreciate it. Molly and I came on pretty similar in time, we did the department tours together. It was a great bonding experience with Molly and a great learning opportunity with all of the department heads, so kind of always had that connection with Molly, I felt like. Dan, I appreciate your wisdom that you showed as the pro team and on council as a whole, coming into this role. Those big shoes to fill, and so I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to attempt to fill those shoes, I really do. Jason, you've been a huge role model for me in my time here, and I'm sure that will continue. I've told you, I'm going to be hitting your phone for advice on the frequent, so I hope you keep picking up for me. Thank you all again, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan?
Nothing much more additional, I just wish the best of, best of luck to each of you. And like, like Kevin said, I'm not going anywhere. I'm staying here in Napoleon, and I just might end up on another city board or committee sometime down the road. Good luck to the, the future as we start 2024.
Thank you. Molly?
Nothing more.
Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you all for your service, and Mayor, I'm going to miss those conversations, phone calls. Really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Billy?
Thank you to Mr. Mayor, Dan and Molly for your service to the city. Best of luck in the future, thanks again, and don't be a stranger.
Andy?
Yeah, I thank the three of you for sure. I've appreciated the time that I've been able to spend with you over the last almost 12 full months. Mayor, I'm going to miss our Monday and Friday chats, you're welcome to stop in any Monday and Friday morning yet.
Okay.
And keep me on the straight and narrow.
Try to do that.
I appreciate it. If you hadn't noticed, my staff is here this evening. I promise you, I did not know the mayor was going to do that. I honestly had no idea, that was impressive, though. You did a nice job. But I appreciate them, they've made my first 12 months, I won't say easy, but you certainly have, it wouldn't have been nearly as easy without you. So, I really thank every one of them. We've had some tremendous challenges, we've overcome those challenges. We continue to have challenges, and we continue to fight every day. And they've just been really, really helpful, every step of the way. Their dedication, their professionalism, and their leadership in each of their respective departments. I'm just very fortunate to have them, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything, Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a wonderful start to your 2024. And we'll see most of you January 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, have anything else?
No, it's been a pleasure, Molly and Dan, and I don't know what else I would say.
I don't feel anything.
No, no, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
All right, we will move on to executive sessions. We have executive session for personnel to consider an appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee, and also one for pending litigation. We have a motion for the one for personnel.
Sublift.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And we have a motion for pending litigation.
Sublift.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session for pending litigation.
A second.
Okay, there's no action taken, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. And we have a motion to come out of executive session for personnel to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Motion?
A second.
Okay, and Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, no action taken. Item M, approved payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. And item N, adjournment.
A motion.
Second.
I should have Molly and Dan do it. Yeah. Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.